All right, I'd like to call to order the September twenty-fourth meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The leg is missing.
Thanks, Mary.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Petway, here. Granlund?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stendick?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll start with our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On October first at 5:00 PM, we have a Subcommittee on Policy here in the Community Room. On October first at 7:00 PM, we have a special called meeting in the Community Room. October fourth, it's homecoming football game with fireworks at the end. October eighth at 5:00 PM is a Subcommittee on Community Engagement in the Training Room. October eighth at 6:00 PM is a regular school board meeting in the Community Room. October tenth is a Flex Learning Day. October eleventh, seventeenth, and eighteenth, there is no school. October fifteenth at 5:30 PM is a school board work session here in the Community Room, and October eighteenth, the district is closed. Next, we have our communication of the Board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting or request presented at this time, and time is limited to three minutes per speaker. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the Board? All right. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the Personnel Report from September twenty-fourth, 2024, the School Board Minutes from the September seventeenth work session, and the Employee Handbook as presented at the September tenth Board Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution, so I will read this. And it's on my screen, but I read better on paper. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Minnesota Statute 123B dot zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same for the purpose designated. On that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number Thirteen resolves to accept with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background. The detailed background includes monetary. Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters donated $4,000 to girls soccer, $1,000 to girls swimming, $2,000 to football, and $2,000 to Highland Elementary for a total of $9,000 in August. And Columbia Heights VFW donated $1,000 to support boys volleyball. In kind, Neil Granlund donated twenty-five spools of Cool Filament for 3D printing for tech class usage, estimated value of $4,500. An anonymous donor donated bins for classrooms and the library at Valley View, estimated value of $130. Mr. and Mrs. Bond facilitated the collection of school supplies for Columbia Heights Public Schools with the support of community members and local businesses, including Fixed Coffee, the VFW, Subway, and Columbia Market. The school supplies and backpacks were delivered to the Placement Center for distribution. Total fiscal year 2024-2025 monetary contributions to date, $17,575. Can I please get a motion to, for this resolution, to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Mary?
Thank you to the community, and also, you know, we're so incredibly lucky, like we say a lot, and to see the community come together in all these ways and support our students is absolutely fantastic. My husband did donate the filament to our 3D printing lab, and it's specific to the high school, and now I know that those ones are particularly expensive and hard to come by, so I just want to pass along his appreciation that he's able to bring it and to know that our kids are going to be able to use it, because 3D printing is definitely something the way of the future, and it's great to be able to support our students that way, so.
Thanks, Mary. Any other discussion? All right, as this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle, will you do the roll, please?
Yes. Granlund?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items, starting with our reports from members of the Board, and we will start with Laura.
I get to start, okay. I've got a ton to report. I was at the work-study session last week. I attended the tail end of the Pride Festival, and it ended up being really quite a beautiful day, so that was really nice, to be able to walk around and see everybody engaging, and the singers were a lot of fun. So that was great. I also attended the open house over at the high school. That was supposed to be, of course, outside, but the rain again threatened. It seemed to be kind of an ongoing issue with rain and open houses, but it ended up being a very nice event. They pulled it all together. I really liked that we weren't all crammed inside the gym. It was nice to be able to just walk around, and I think that should pretty much cover things.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, I attended last week's work session as well. I also attended the Peace Day Celebration and the Color Run over at North Park, and I attended Pride as well this past weekend, which was indeed a lot of fun. They always have great activities in vendors, so it's always nice to meet people at the city events. And thanks to Heights Next for putting that on for us.
Thank you. Mary?
So, I attended the work session last week, as well as the candidate forum, so if people weren't unable to attend, that recording is available online. I know we were supposed to be able to livestream it, and there were some technical problems, but it's all up now, so people can feel free to watch that. I also attended Pride last weekend, or just this last Saturday. Again, it started out very rainy, and I was glad to see that it cleared up to be a quite beautiful day. I also had several meetings with Mayor Marques Simula, members Petway and Maderas, and then I had several phone calls with Chair Mueller, members Petway, Maderas, Superintendent Stendick, several students and families, and staff over the last two weeks, so thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Jessica?
Oh. Unexpected. Thought you were going to zig, you zagged. Okay.
Keep you on your toes.
It's all right, I got my cheat sheet here. So it has been a busy couple of weeks. Since the last school board meeting, I attended the Highland PTO meeting, and at that first meeting of the year, Principal Jenke went over the Title I plans for the school, including academic goals as well as family involvement goals for the year, and then they also talked about upcoming events, including Turkey Bingo, which is happening on November fifteenth at 5:30 at Highland. I know it's also on the list of events that the Subcommittee on Community Engagement presented to us, but it's a very fun event. It's Highland's biggest fundraiser of the year, so it's a while till November fifteenth, but not that long, so I'm starting to help promote that. I also attended the Safe Streets meeting with the county and the city of Columbia Heights and school district representatives last week. I also attended the Friends of Coretac Park meeting that was held last week, and with our county commissioner, our mayor, representatives from the police department and the county, talking about the renovation plans for the park, which is very impactful for our district. Based on its proximity, we have a lot of classes and programs that utilize the park, and so I was happy to hear about those new renovation plans, including a new pavilion, which they got some grant funding for, so that will be going up in the spring, so that's exciting for our community. Like all of you, I attended the School Board Work Session. Last Friday, I did attend the School Law Conference that was hosted by Squires, Walzberger, and Mace, and that was just a really full day of a lot of information, but some highlights for me were, there was a session on case law updates, so really hearing how the law is evolving in our state right now, and how that might impact some of our policies and the way that we operate. Also talked a lot about evolving law in social media, how we handle AI. I know that's something we've talked about in our policy committee a little bit here in the district, labor issues, and then really an area of law that's quickly changing across the country in balancing First Amendment rights and Fourteenth Amendment rights equal protection. So lots to learn, and I'm glad I was able to attend that. And then, like many of you, I was also able to attend the Columbia Heights Pride Event with my family this weekend. It's exciting to see our students there, tabling with the GSA, and meet a lot of community members, so that's my report. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jessica. Julie?
I also attended the work session and had a discussion with Chair Mueller. I did review expenses for June and July, and so I just kind of want to give an update there. I did review the bank reconciliations and the support for our general bank account, which most activity goes through, and there were no exceptions. The reconciliation was well-prepared. The only thing is, we still have some checks that are outstanding pre-2023 that has gone down, so management has been reducing that list and working it downwards so that we don't have to have an achievement issue. I also looked at expenses for June and July and didn't find anything unusual, and that is it. So, there you go.
For my report, due to my work travels, it was a little bit limited in what I was able to participate in the last couple of weeks, but as Julie mentioned, we had dinner together and had a really nice conversation for a couple hours, so thank you for your time. I enjoyed that. Also attended the work session last week, and thank you for, Mary, for covering the end of that as I rushed off to the airport to a delayed flight. I also had conversations with Mary Granlund and with Superintendent Stendick, so that was it for me. Thank you. Next on is our Superintendent's Report and Correspondence. Superintendent Stendick?
Thank you. On Monday, the Metro Area Superintendents and Finance Directors met together to discuss the widespread education funding shortfalls. This group will meet periodically to share resources and collaborate on a legislative level potentially, to ensure that lawmakers clearly understand the shortfalls in areas such as the cross subsidies and also local optional revenue. In Columbia Heights, we've had to cut, you know, significantly over the last seven, eight years. That's a newer process for some districts, and now that it's, other districts are having to cut as well, people are, more people seem to be paying attention. I also met with Mayor Marcus Simula, along with the previous mayor and, who's a current City Council member for our sister city, Womianki in Poland. They were able to take a brief tour of a school as part of their visit. We are keeping a close eye on the enrollment at Columbia Heights High School as they are nearing capacity. If the enrollment holds, and the Board will receive the weekly enrollment report, of course, I will likely come to the Board on October eighth seeking to close to open enrollment. We'll watch the enrollment. Last week, I participated along with Member Maderas with the Anoka County and City of Columbia Heights regarding Safe Streets. I really appreciated the county engineer taking the time to truly listen to our needs of both the city and the school officials, and there were some really interesting ideas generated about the Valley View pickup and drop-off, so we'll continue to work on improving that process. I attended the School Board Candidate Forum on September eleventh, and just want to thank, again, Local 710 for hosting that forum. Lastly, a huge thank you to Metronics Wishes for Wheels program for donating bikes to both Highland and Valley View students. I did have conversations with Chair Mueller, Vice Chair Granlund, and came close to meeting with Member Hool, but our paths crossed at the District Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the Columbia Heights Citywide Safety Plan. I would like to welcome Suliman Khan and Connor Cox from the city of Columbia Heights.
Just give me a second. I'm going to go ahead and get a PowerPoint that I have up on the screen here. Yeah, I forgot what.
I really appreciate that. Brian's like, just, you're almost there, yeah, just in case.
All right. Brian, I know you showed me this too.
You sat down too soon.
Members of the Board, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Salman Khan. I'm the Assistant City Engineer with Columbia Heights. So today, we're here to talk about our Citywide Safety Action Plan. I know a couple of you did attend a meeting with us and along with Anoka County to talk about safety along Forty-Ninth here, which is under the county's jurisdiction. That's a county roadway. Our plan is a citywide plan, so we're looking at all the streets that are within the city here, and so we really wanted to, you know, connect with the school board. They're definitely a stakeholder here within the city, so definitely a group that we wanted to reach out to, engage with, and get some feedback for our plan. So just a brief overview of our agenda. I'll talk a little bit about the plan overview, just to get everybody a better understanding of what the plan is all about, what our goal is, what we're trying to accomplish with that, and, you know, how you all can help us out with developing that plan. I'll pass it off to Connor to talk more about the community engagement that we have done and we're still continuing to do right now, and he'll also talk about the citywide crash data and safety analysis that they're working on, as well as next steps for the plan, and we'll open it up for any questions and discussion to end. So just a brief overview of the plan. So Safe Streets for All, it's a federal initiative, so City of Columbia Heights, we were awarded federal dollars in order to put together a citywide safety action plan, and so the goal of the program is to take a look at safety across the nation's roadway with the goal of reducing both fatal and serious injury crashes that happen on our roadways, and so there's kind of two components of the Safe Streets for All program. There is a planning component, and there's also implementation. So right now, the city, we received funding in order to do a safety action plan, so that's the planning part of it. So we're doing a comprehensive look at our city, looking at crash data, figuring out where the problem areas are, also connecting with the community, getting feedback, and, you know, bringing forward solutions or strategies or countermeasures in order to increase safety on our roadways. So again, really, the goal of it, or the main intent of it, is to prevent or reduce death and serious injuries on our roads. So 2023 is when the city received the grant funding from FHWA or the federal government. We started, we kicked off this project in June, in the spring of this year, and we'll conclude, we'll wrap it up by next summer. And so right now, just to kind of expand on kind of our schedule and scope, so right now, we're still in the beginning stages. We're going out, we're collecting feedback, engaging with the community. In the background, we have Bolton and Mank, who's our consultant that we've hired to help us develop the safety action plan. They're doing a comprehensive safety analysis, so they're looking at crash data to figure out where are, again, the problem areas throughout town, and what are, you know, some of the contributing factors that are contributing to these crashes from happening, and with that, we can, you know, create a high-injury network and prioritize safety interventions or solutions to help us increase safety or reduce those crashes from happening on our roadways. So safety, I mean, just to provide a little bit more background on kind of safety, traffic safety, I used to work for the Minnesota Department of Transportation. I have a traffic safety background. Traffic safety, really, I mean, I would say previously, prior to the early 2000s, a lot of the traffic safety that happened, or the funding that would go towards traffic safety, was more reactive, where, you know, you would kind of wait until a bad crash happens at a certain location, and then you would try to, you know, find funding to try to improve that specific intersection or stretch of roadway. Right now, I mean, the new approach is really to be proactive, and so we're kind of taking a look at it and, you know, figuring out what are some of the risks that we have on our roadways, and can we proactively implement safety strategies across the system in order to prevent those crashes from happening in the first place, and so that's one of the goals, I would say, of this, of this comprehensive look at our roadways, in order to figure out what is it that we can do to prevent, you know, these crashes from happening in the first place. In the winter, so we'll get into after we're kind of have gotten through the engagement and comprehensive safety analysis, we'll start to develop the design concepts based on the information that we have collected. We'll also be taking a look at citywide speed limits, so that's a question that has come up a number of times. There are other cities that have reduced their speed limits on their city roadways, citywide. That is something that we are looking at, and that'll be a part of this plan as well. The final deliverable will be an Integrated Action Plan Report, so that will be developed and put together for us. We will then, you know, have that information to then set us up for future funding, so the other piece of the Safe Streets for All program, as I mentioned, is the implementation, and so once we have an idea of where our problem areas are and what are some potential solutions, that will help us get set up for going after federal funding through Safe Streets for All, as well as other, there's other federal programs, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, there's other state dollars that we can potentially go after as well, so that's really the goal, is to help us set ourselves up to go after those fundings for future implementation. And so again, that will kind of wrap up in the spring and summer of 2025, and so with that, I'm going to pass it over to Connor, and he'll talk more about our community engagement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So just a quick introduction. My name's Connor Cox. I'm a Senior Transportation Planner with Bolton and Mank. As Salman mentioned, we're the consulting firm that the city's hired to lead the study. Thanks again for having us here, the opportunity to speak with you. I'm just going to give a quick overview of what we've been doing in terms of our community and stakeholder engagement, so we have a dedicated project webpage, which has a lot of background information about the study, as well as where people can provide feedback. We have done a couple of pop-up events, which essentially means we go to an existing event and table at it and just try to speak to as many community members as possible. We have been in the city's newsletter, as well as the e-newsletter. We have an online interactive map that is live right now. We've had live for, I think, a month and a half or so. We've got a ton of feedback on that. Then we also have some informational boards that are set up at the City Hall and the library, just again, trying to get the word out on the study and generate traffic to the website. A couple of weeks ago, we attended a work session with the City Council and got their engagement, got them involved. Of course, we're here at the School Board meeting tonight, and then we have our first open house for the study coming up here in a couple of weeks on October tenth. So really, what are we doing with community engagement? The core question is, we're trying to get the community members' feedback on where they feel unsafe traveling, so regardless of mode, whether they feel unsafe when they get off the bus, or when they're driving, or walking, or biking, we're trying to really pinpoint locations across the city. I'll talk a little bit more about some of the data analysis that we've done, but we kind of like to balance both the community members' opinions and perspectives with what the actual data tell us, and then kind of merge those two things. I referenced that online map a little bit earlier, so this is just a quick screen grab of it. We've had over 350 comments from community members, which is really outstanding engagement. You can see the different colored icons that kind of symbolize a different type of comment, whether it's referring to a walking issue, a driving issue, a bus issue, something like that. And then in terms of our citywide crash data, so this is really kind of, I guess, more the technical side of things. What we've done is, we've looked at the most recent five-year crash data that is available, and really dug into that data to try to understand, where are we seeing the issues with crashes? Are we seeing clusters of crashes? Are we seeing certain areas that are particularly troublesome? And we have an increase focused on crashes that involve pedestrians or bicyclists, because they are, you know, the most vulnerable users of our roadway system, and then, of course, in the unfortunate circumstance where there is a fatality or a serious injury, that obviously indicates to us that that is a major, you know, problem spot and something that should never happen, so we pay close attention to those types of things when we're going through this analysis, and ultimately, we're kind of trying to identify hotspot locations, so are there certain areas that really jump out in the community where it's like, that is a big issue? We should focus our attention there when we get to that next phase and start to design solutions. And with that, I guess the, sort of the big next step from that is, we start to identify what we call a high-injury network, so again, it's kind of filtering the roadway system down to maybe about 20% of the roadway that actually account for like 80% of the crashes, so, you know, again, it's kind of trying to figure out if we have limited resources to invest on certain safety interventions, we want to make sure that we're doing that in the places that have the biggest need. So this is just, again, a quick figure of five-year crash data, so the map here shows, all those little dots represent an individual crash that has happened at some point in the last five years. The orange dots represent a serious injury crash, so that's when, you know, someone maybe broke their arm or something serious happened. Unfortunately, the red dots are where there's a fatality on our roadway system, and then the other colored dots are more of what we call a minor injury crash where someone, you know, did get hurt, but it wasn't a serious injury, so we take all these things into account when we're sort of evaluating the crash data citywide. So I just wanted to overlay the location of, you know, the schools in the community with this map. Obviously, this group is familiar with these locations, but that's also telling, you know, something we think about a lot is students walking to school. As I mentioned, pedestrians are a vulnerable user, and particularly young kids walking, so thinking about the infrastructure around schools, are there things that can be improved that could help reduce crashes? So just briefly about our next steps for the project, so I already mentioned that we have an open house, public open house, that's coming up here in a couple of weeks at the City Hall. After that, we sort of, I guess, wrap up the initial engagement phase. We're really trying to collect as much information from community members as possible, and then after that, we kind of go back and really start to workshop through things, so where, what did we learn from community members? What did we hear? What are some of those locations that we should really start to focus on? And then we start thinking about different design interventions. How can we design a certain intersectional way that reduces crashes, or is there a policy at the city level that we can tweak that would also help improve safety? So we kind of get into the design concepts and then wrap it all up with a draft So we kind of get into the design concepts and then wrap it all up with a draft plan, a safety action plan, and we hope to finish the project in in the spring of next year. So that's a pretty quick overview, but we're happy to to take any questions or have any further discussion.
All right, thank you very much. Questions? Julie?
So I noticed that, you know, we have, you mentioned 49th is a county road versus a city road, and of course, then 65 or Central, I think, is a state. So do we have, does the city of Columbia Heights have authority over how to change those streets, even though you're, you know, the the county or state owned?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So we work in coordination with both the county and the state. We do not have jurisdiction over those roadways, so we don't have the authority to to kind of do whatever we want. But our goal is to really, you know, study it, bring forward the information and the data, and try to figure out a solution and and, you know, we most likely would have to, you know, figure out funding for it. So there are, there are things that the city does on both the county system, as well as the state system. You know, one example is the the Safe Routes to School project that we just got done doing here. And that was led by the city, but, you know, a lot of the work was on 49th, which is a county roadway. So to answer your question, we don't have the full authority, so we can't just do anything without their blessings, but we do work very closely with them. And the goal of this plan, again, is to, you know, put together a comprehensive look at all of our roadways and figure out the next steps.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you so much, Member Maderas, and Director Hennekenz, and Superintendent Stenvik, and Chair Mueller, and actually, Director Palmer. We were all worked together for many years on changing 44th and working to get that designated down by Valley View and Columbia Academy to be a a school route, so that it would have the light and help inform drivers to slow down. I know one of the things that's complicating that sort of area down there, where on your five-year crash history, that number one, is that there's just not a lot of room to, like, spread it out, or to add other lanes, or things like that. And also, I know that on your, on another map, you had listed 44th was another area where there was a lot of comments and things about traffic there, because that is also a county-maintained road, if I remember correctly. I think 49th, 44th, and 40th are all?
Forty Forty-fourth is not, 40th is a county roadway.
Okay.
Yep, 40th, 44th is not, though.
Oh, good, okay. So I know a lot of the things that we talked about historically for 49th were reducing the lane size, so people weren't zooming through, adding those sorts of sidewalks and bump outs, and those sorts of things, all things that are used to reduce traffic and to slow it down. Is there any discussion about doing those things, or has there been any, talk about the impact of that either on Central or looking at additional changes for 49th to make that area safer?
Yeah, so there's, there's actually a number of efforts that are currently going on. One, so I'll I'll start with Central Avenue. So MinDOT is currently, right now, they've gone through, they're, they went through, if you're familiar, they did a, it's called the PEL study, that took a few years. They're currently, right now, in in kind of the concept design phase for Central Avenue. MinDOT has found funding to do a big project on Central Avenue in 2028. And so right now, they're in the process, again, of going through some concept designs that have come through from the study that they did with the with the PEL study. So safety is certainly one of the, one of the things that was was kind of a high priority for that. And so there are a number of changes that they are proposing as part of that project. There definitely is more more to come with that. I know MinDOT is planning to do their own engagement in open houses in order to present the vision that they have for for the stretch of roadway. And so a lot of, I'll give you kind of a teaser, I mean, a lot of what they're talking about right now is kind of narrowing down the roadway to slow cars down, and also putting in, you know, more pet and bike infrastructure along Central Avenue. Again, that's still in the very concept or preliminary phase, so there's nothing that's been finalized as of yet, but that's some of the ideas that they have brought forward. 49th, now I know 49th, we we did meet with the county just, you know, very recently to to talk more about 49th, and they did collect our feedback. Anoka County is also in the process of, they're also doing a comprehensive safety action plans themselves. So that's also in the works. And I did attend a, last week, they did have a workshop where they invited various local agencies to come attend to talk about their safety action plan, and for her, the local agencies to bring forward, you know, areas where where we're having problems, you know, within any individual city. I definitely mentioned 49th, I was there, I mentioned 49th.
Thank you, thank you.
It was one that was brought up and that they're aware, that they are aware of. So again, that's, that's also in discussion, and we're trying to figure out, you know, that that roadway as well. 44th, you mentioned as well. 44th is having, so the old, we call the rainbow site, between 43rd and 44th, on the west side of Central. That's a large redevelopment project that's going to be coming up in the very near future. So with that redevelopment on that site, there is some work we're going to have to do on 44th. One is that the sanitary sewer lines that are there, we're going to have to upgrade those in order to serve on that site. So currently, right now, they're proposing, I can't remember the number, it was six or 700 units on that site, and so there is some work we need to do. And so with that, we're going to have to rip up the entire roadway in order to kind of redo those sanitary sewer service lines. And so we are in the process of also figuring out, well, you know, if we're going to rip up the roadway, what is it going to look like when we put it back? We don't have plans to put it back exactly the way it is right now. But, I mean, that is something that, you know, we're we're figuring out right now and planning for, for the future. And so safety improvements will definitely be a part of of kind of what we are considering and looking at, and we will, I'm sure, you know, come back, you know, in front of you all, again, you know, once we're at that point, to figure out, you know, what 44th should look like.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I just want to say, Chair Mueller lives close to where I live, off 44th, and it is also part of, there's a lot of kids that have to walk to school that way, and where the sidewalk ends is literally my neighbors.
Sure.
It stops right before it gets to my house. And so thinking about even beyond just 49th, that corridor, like, all of the spaces in between that our students have to walk, that is, that, as your data shows, not entirely safe always for our our students and our families that have to traverse it. So thank you so much for this information, it's really helpful.
Absolutely.
Laura?
Actually, I have a specific question about 40th, between Reservoir and Central. Coming down out of that hill with Circle Terrace right there is a really dangerous intersection, and we've been very fortunate, I've seen buses, school buses stuck there on that, on that, in that little section right there. I don't know if there's any consideration on maybe not having traffic coming out onto 40th off of that hill?
Yeah, so.
Circle Terrace is two ways, but it's, you can't, you can't see really well right there, and there's no way to stop.
Sure. If you haven't done so already, I would submit that comment on the map.
I put that in my notes.
I know, we're taking some notes here today, too.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, I, I was, a couple of years back, when we had all that ice, there was a school bus stuck right there, and I called the police, and I said, you better c- shut this road down, because somebody's going to, because they're just sliding down the road.
Oh, sure.
And frankly, my kid gets on that bus.
Sure, yep. I appreciate that feedback, yeah, we'll we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Thank you. Michelle?
So you said there are federal dollars going towards this, like, is it covering fully, or just a part of it?
Yeah, so, good question. So the, we actually have a, we also, we have, majority of it is federal funds, but we also did get funding from the state as well, in order to cover our match. So with the Safe Streets for All program, it's an 80/20 split between federal and local, but there was also a program from the state level, which provided funding for the local match of it. So we were basically covered almost 100% with both federal and state dollars for the project.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Jessica?
Just as we're talking about the community engagement efforts here, because we do have community members that may not have seen all of the ways that 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 those opportunities have been distributed, and we are recording this, so this would be a good opportunity, too, if you could tell us where folks could go to to find those opportunities to make comments, and if you have any of the details about the October 10th open house, I'd love to hear that as well.
Yeah, sure. So again, the the open house is in the evening on October 10th, and it's at City Hall. Plan is for it to be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. You can easily find the project webpage, I think probably the easiest way is just to search it, Columbia Heights Safety Action Plan, and that'll pop up, and it's, it's one of those sort of interactive webpages where you can scroll down, and then the the map will actually pop up, kind of just right on the webpage. So it's pretty easy to to leave comments, and you can also sign up for email updates to get notifications about future events or engagement opportunities, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments?
Just real quick for me, I want to thank you both for coming. I think it's great to have this presentation, and it just shows the commitment of the partnership between the city and the schools. I really appreciate that you've identified in the map kind of where our schools are within the city, and that you're paying attention to that, so thank you. And also, just thank you for your continued partnership and for your support with the new walkways and curbs as part of the Safe Routes to School. That's, that's huge for us. So as, as Member Granland said, I'm like hugely passionate about sidewalks. So I'm going to go on your website and mark all the roads in Columbia Heights that don't have sidewalks. I'm just passionate about that, and making sure our kids get to school safe, safely, and the the walkways and the curbs that recently happened is just a great step forward. So thank you for that, and really thank you for your time today.
Absolutely, I'm glad to hear it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, wonderful. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And you don't think you have to stay for the rest of the meeting? Unless you really, really want to.
You're welcome to stay, you're very welcome to stay.
But you're not obligated.
Things that you will hear at a school board meeting and also in the classroom, just stop sharing.
Thank you both.
You both.
Thanks.
I'm, as Director Hennekenz, is working on that. I will move on to our next item, which is our American Indian Overnight Field Trip with Superintendent Stenvik and with Yolanda Slowey. That was not the right one. There we go. And I believe Yolanda is joining us.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
There you are. Hi. Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board. This evening, Yolanda Dor Slowey, our American Indian mentor, is, and I are here to share some information about an upcoming overnight field trip with our American Indian Education Program. Of course, our mission in Columbia Heights is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And this field trip, overnight field trip, really aligns with all of our core values, including the Columbia Heights School Board Education Equity Statement. We will be back seeking approval for the overnight field trip on October 8th. So as the board knows, there's a variety of different types of field trips. This would be an instructional field trip. The board may remember that in June, Yolanda and I took students to Malax in June, and this is a photo of the Four Seasons Room at the museum. We were really fortunate, because one of Yolanda's family members works as a docent at the museum and was able to get us back into the archives, so these are not on public display artifacts. But following this process is part of school board policy and seeking approval. So Yolanda, did you want to share?
Yep, so Heights at Malax, we have named this field trip Aqua Music is a Gaigan, which means Heights at Malax. I, I really love the the way that we say this, and that we have a place there. Our students really appreciate the cultural immersion that they get while they are on this program, or this field trip, and I have learned that this has been a bond and experience between these students that have been there before. So the purpose of this cultural trip to Malax Lake area is to bring a source of connection with the earth, while learning the original caretakers of the land through experiment.
Experiential.
There we go. Lessons about the Minnesota Ojibwe migration and the traditional stories of the Dakota People. In addition to building community and connection to our own cultural, their own cultural identity, students will engage in academic activities, alliance to science, social studies, and language art standards. So while we were on this trip, and and while we'll be on this new trip, starting October 18th to the 20th, we will be doing a hiking presentation with the Minnesota DNR, and that will be linked to what they learned last year with our Minnesota Tribal DNR. Todd, I cannot remember his last name, so very sorry about that.
That's okay.
We also toured the Malax Lake Museum. We would be wanting to do that also, again, to have, you know, more time. They had a lot of questions, they wanted to go through it more, I think that would be a really good experience for them to build on. Visiting the Malax Lake Trading Post, which was opened in 1867, and that still has historical reference, and also modern contemporary art that children, our students, can learn from. We will also be doing presentations with the Malax Lake travel officials, and having other cultural experiences that will gain community building, connection, and bond in through our students, bringing them a good community within our Heights schools.
So our.
So that will be October, go ahead.
I was going to say, our inaugural trip was last June, and we debriefed with the students, it was a wonderful and amazing experience, but, you know, we always are continually learning, and June was, was troublesome in some ways because of so many mosquitoes.
Because we're not fun.
Yes, there were mosquitoes, there were even a tick or two. And so really looking towards October, the dates here are the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of MEA Weekend, so returning that Sunday, so students would not miss school. A couple of the students would, might be like repeat students, and so the trip would be designed to do, to go deeper with some of the same, but also different experiences that they would have. And again, there would be no cost to the qualifying students, and this would be students who are part of the American Indian Education Program at Columbia Heights High School. And with that, I will stop sharing, we'll take any questions, we'll be back October 8th.
Any questions? Julie?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm confused by the dates, 8th or 18th? You're going on the 18th through the 20th is the?
Yep, so we'll be back at the next board meeting, which is October 8th, seeking a vote of approval from the board.
Okay, that's where I was confused, I was hearing 8th, and then I was hearing 18th.
And then hoping to travel over MEA Weekend, which, I know it has a different name now, but that's, we still refer to it as MEA, sorry.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep.
Laura? I just have a quick comment, I I just love how this program and everything that's being, that's being done, just how much it's grown since the time I've been on this board, and I'm I'm hoping that we're really, we're really moving towards the the reason for being able to support the, this this additional cultural and educational, and being able to help to maintain, you know, the people of the First Nation being being able to have these experiences outside of what we've created here, you know. And being able to enjoy. It's just been, it's just such a, it's grown so much, more than just simple, you know, handicrafts and stuff like that, being able to bring in and get out there. And I really wish I could be on some of these trips because they really look amazing.
Thank you.
And thank you so much to everybody who donated so much of their time to making this a great program.
We had really strong feedback from the student groups that they want, as Yolanda mentioned, they want to be more connected. And that was another rationale of moving this excursion to the beginning of the school year. So students that, you know, form that bond in the beginning of the year and it lasts throughout the years. That was really important, I know, not to speak for you, Yolanda, but to Yolanda as well.
Yes, that's very true. I do have a comment. I, you know, one of our area goals is ask the question of, does family feel supported by staff? And, you know, their mentor? And I think that I feel personally supported by the school board and by our superintendent and the whole administration at Columbia Heights. And for us to be able to do this kind of trip, and not only just this trip, but our Buffalo trip and all of the other events that we are able to do, shows the commitment that you all have to our program and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I have two. One, did I miss the slide where you said that the board chair needed to attend?
No, because it was vice chair, sorry.
I really would like to attend this trip as well. And then can you just talk a little bit about where the funding comes from for this?
Yep. And in fact, at the next board meeting, Yolanda and I will be back because we're meeting with the parent committee on the, this year's goals and budget. And so that will be coming to the board as well on October 8th. But there's two funding streams. One is federal, which is a much smaller pot of funding, and then one is state funding. So it's funding dedicated to support our American Indian students and families.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll see you guys back on the 8th for that, as well as the action item of the trip. Thank you, Yolanda.
Yep, thank you guys.
Our next item is the Teacher on Call Rates. And we have Director Hennigan in the room and Director Bennett on Zoom.
All right, I will get this started. I know it's on the wrong thing right now, but I'll fix that.
It's just a teaser for what's to come.
That's right. My floating controls was blocking me. Hopefully this starts, since we were having problems with this starting before. So we'll just get started and we'll see what happens. All right, thank you Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. So this evening, we talked about as an information item, our Teachers on Call Rates. So that's our organization that work with substitute teachers. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. So this is an information presentation this evening. Will follow by an action item back to the board on October 8th. So Teachers on Call Rates, typically we don't fluctuate a lot. And, but through the pandemic, we had to make some changes to those rates to fluctuate, to ensure that we could compete for the available substitute pool, which was very challenging, actually continues to be challenging. During that time, our elementary rates, we did increase higher than our secondary rates because that, we had an easier time at the secondary level covering for classrooms with other teachers on their prep and paying them for that. At the elementary level, that was much more difficult. I mean, so I had a harder time getting those covered. So we did increase those. And we did look at metro comparable district rates, both during the pandemic and continue to look at them now. And they do fall, our current rates that have adjusted through the pandemic do fall within that comparable range. So what, this evening, we're presenting the rates as they are right now, as they have adjusted during the pandemic. And we're seeking, at the next board meeting, board approval of those rates moving forward. So making them a permanent change. So the teacher full day, nonelementary schools, so the secondary schools, $175 per day. Full day teacher at the elementary schools, $200 per day. Teacher retiree full day, $180 per day. Per professional clerical and food service, $15 a day. Teacher long-term full day, so long-term sub, $180 a day, and then custodian, $15 per day.
Can you, so that's $15 per day for custodian?
Uh, sorry, hour. Sorry.
I was like, why?
Yeah, that's gonna ask that.
I was waiting.
Not sure if that's legal.
So the paraprofessional clerical and food service and custodian are $15 per hour.
Just magically changed to per hour.
Yeah, perfect. It's like magic.
I was wondering if that was just a fee tacked on in addition to what we were paying you.
Yeah, no. Sorry about that.
So to clarify, these are our current rates that-
They are current rates.
That were adjusted kind of during COVID.
Yep.
And that what you're seeking board approval for next, at our next meeting, is to memorialize these rates
Correct.
as the current rates moving forward.
Correct.
Thank you so much for this. I really appreciate it. When we say $200 per day or 175 hours per day, how many hours are we expecting the subs to be working for?
Like for a custodian, if they're filling in for a custodial shift at eight hours. For the teachers, they're filling in for a teacher contract day of seven and a quarter hours.
Right.
So that's what we're looking at. You know, sometimes that decreases just because they cover the class, or the classes during the day. So they show up for the start of the day and then leave at the, as the students are rolling out the door. So it's a little bit less than that.
So bell to bell, right? Is that, okay. Thank you so much.
Other questions? Jessica?
I'm just wondering if we could back up a little bit and you could just explain a little bit about what Teachers on Call is. I know for people who aren't familiar with how the substitute operational process works, it's maybe very different from what people remember or grew up with. And so I feel like that would be helpful for this conversation.
I'll let Director Bennett start with that, maybe.
Yes, so Teachers on Call, it is a substitute agency. And it used to be called Kelly Services probably six or seven years ago. So we've used them for, since I've been here, so about 18 years, plus time before I was here. But it's an agency where if a teacher, let's take teachers for example, are absent, they can call in their absence, then Teachers on Call will try to fill that absence for the day.
And that's the primary way that we utilize substitutes external to the district, correct?
Yes, it goes through Teachers on Call.
Okay. So it's not like there's a substitute pool that the school district has. I think that that's something that not a lot of community members might understand.
Yeah, there's some districts that do it in-house, but those are usually very large districts that have staff to do it. We do have three elementary building subs that we've hired on as our own employees. We're working on hiring one for Valley View, but we do have one at Highland right now, one at North Park that are our staff, that do serve as subs in the buildings. But those are the only three.
So then, kind of in this nature, you know, it's good to have a competitive rate because we want, when we need a sub, we, you know, and they call the pool, we want the pool to say yes to us. And that, you know, they're, of course, like any of us would do, we'd look at, you know, I'm getting a call, probably lots of calls every day. And I'm getting a call from this school and they're going to pay $150 a day. And I'm getting a call from this school and they pay $175. Chances are, they're going to go to a $175 school, so. And thank you for doing the analysis of how we fit with other districts. Other questions? Jessica?
How often are we doing this analysis and adjusting rates historically?
I know Teachers on Call, the contact I have there every once in a while will say your, she might say like your daily full-time rate at the elementary school is low. You know, and here's some comparables. So usually Teachers on Call can tell us like we're falling behind. They've been very good at doing that for us, too.
And I would just say that, I mean, the pandemic really shifted this a lot because districts across the metro were reacting to the shortage and to the need. And so there was a lot of movement during that time. Prior to that, don't, there was not a lot of movement. I mean, it, you know, three to five years, maybe they would, rates would change. But now it's, yes, we're definitely in a different era.
And I guess that's what I'm wondering is, do we have a larger challenge now in this new environment? Where, you know, we're not the only school board that's looking at our rates and determining what's comparable. So are we, are we in an environment that's more prone to sort of rate chasing, right? Like we're not something to really discuss or solve tonight, but I do, I do worry about that.
That's exactly what's happening because Teachers on Call doesn't set the rate. Each school district provides the rate to Teachers on Call. And so as Chair Mueller said, it's like a menu of options for any of the substitutes within the pool. And so it is a kind of a game of keeping up and really determining what we can afford but also being right there in that pocket. Additionally, Teachers on Call provides an annual report, like a fill rate report for all of the different job categories. And so we review that as an admin team. And oftentimes, that report will come to our labor management with, like, when we meet with our teacher union leadership or our other units as well, their leadership. So that information is discussed in terms of fill rates. And they've been a really great organization to work with. We just had a time there where there was almost impossible to get subs during the pandemic. So it was really challenging.
Julie?
So Superintendent Stenbik, do we get a report from Teachers on Call that says if they like or dislike our school in a way that, you know, from activities in the school? So some schools might have more challenges in discipline or other things like that. Do we get some sort of report that says, hey, they like to come to our school because not only the rate's competitive, but because we have a safe school, because we have-
I would ask Director Bennett if we received that type of feedback.
I know, I think they can fill out an end of the day report that goes back to Teachers on Call. And then if there's any issues, they would notify the district, our main contact would. We do get some staff or some teachers on call that live in the community. So they'll come to our school more regularly than a different district. But I guess I usually only hear if there's a big complaint or something.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica?
Thinking about the rates again and kind of shopping around, are there instances, like, are there instances where a sub were to commit to us and they, another opportunity pops up before the day starts and they take that instead?
There's a timeframe, and I'm not exactly sure of the times, but Teachers on Call has it where like, if you cancel at a certain point for so many times, then you get excluded or you get talked to. So they're not really allowed to like skip out an hour before their assignment. So I know Teachers on Call has guidelines on all that.
And then another question, and this is maybe like agenda topic adjacent, but I'm just, in the cases where we can't find a substitute for a position on a given day, can you talk a little bit about how we manage those absences in our buildings?
Yes, so I guess a really great example is the high school. And they have really, they step up over their prep time and cover for each other. I mean, we had one time in COVID, I think we had like 15 staff out and they all stepped up and every position was covered. And so we pay them over their prep time to step up. So the high school really fills that duty. Columbia Academy also has that opportunity to step up and help out during a prep time if we can't fill the position. Elementarys, it's trickier because the prep time doesn't line up with the whole day. So they'll sometimes split classes or in some cases, the principals had to go in and cover. And then in other cases, district staff that have a teaching license have gone in to help out too. So really the elementarys, those building subs help out on that day-to-day when you can't get a sub.
Thank you.
I also remember our former executive assistant, Dawn, had to go in and help serve lunch on a number of occasions.
Director Bennett does it every, every year still.
I just have one more question. So if you look at the rate chart on the second slide, so am I reading this right, that if we have a teacher for a full day at an elementary school, they're paid $200 a day, but if they're a retiree, we pay them $180 a day by virtue of being a retiree?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
A lot of districts give preference to, because the typical rate had been 175 or less. And then, so the retirees get a little bit more than nonelementary. And then during COVID, elementary was really challenging to cover and so the rate went up. And that's kind of comparable to the other districts.
Sure. So that's what I would expect, that I'm looking here and the retiree rate's $180 a day, the teacher full day at the elementary level is 200. So are they being paid at a lower rate because they're retirees?
I'll defer to Director Bennett.
Yeah, so the rate is lower. The $200 a day for elementary, that was, I guess, a direct reflection of that we had up that rate because we were not getting subs at the elementary. So we upped the rate and I guess we never went back and looked at the teacher retiree rate.
Okay. It just seems odd to me that we would pay a retiree, we would pay someone less because they happen to be a retiree of this district. I mean, I think that's, that's opposite of what we want to do achieve.
Right. I mean, is, I'm assuming, or is it something that you can look at, that the teacher full day at elementary that's 200, that the retiree, if they're teaching at elementary, would at least be 200? Wouldn't they be the same?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it internally. I mean, obviously traditionally, the, we've always paid the, the teacher rate was the same district-wide. And it wasn't until COVID that it had changed. So, yeah, we can go back and look at that and talk about what that looks like.
It just seems to me that it's a benefit to have a retiree of the district come back. And so we would want to incentivize that and not disincentivize it.
And it's traditionally been an incentive, a higher rate incentive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, just obviously let us know what you decide on the 8th.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Actually, Mary, so I know this happened at the middle school this last year, that we had teachers out and we had long-term sub in, I believe. And because they were bell to bell, they did not end up doing a lot of grading or anything else. I know that we traditionally offer them more money, like if they're covering that, I think, or a different, no, sorry. Okay, I don't know, but can you talk a little bit about what happens in that instance when we have a long-term sub, but they are not, they are not doing any of the grading for those, for that?
Yep, typically another teacher in that same department, let's say math for example, would get paid to correct the papers. Because oftentimes, they may be teaching the same course, maybe not, but within the same realm.
Yes, wonderful. What happens in those instances? Like how are we being proactive on that if we know ahead of time and we aren't getting any teachers wanting to step up to do that? What are we doing about that? Is there anything that can be done within this, this framework or is that additional?
It's a case-by-case basis in terms of incentivizing, but we follow the teacher contract. And all of that is outlined in the contract.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Other questions? Great, thank you very much. We'll see you next meeting.
Thank you.
Next on our informational items is the Policy First Reading. Um, next on our informational items is the policy first reading. Um, the first one is a legislative change, and that is five oh three student attendance. Um, what that means is that there are just some changes made due to legislative requirements. So there's no substantive changes to this policy. So this will be posted on the website and available for comment. Um, the next.
Chair Mueller?
Yep.
We did have a, in addition to the, to the list of excused absences, however, that was not a statutory change.
Oh, you're correct. Thank you.
So we did add um, drivers' uh, test appointments as a excused absence in our district policy.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any questions on the legislative changes, uh, part five oh three? Um, next, we have a policy first reading, um, which has a substantive change. Um, and this is policy seven oh four, development and maintenance of an inventory or fixed assets and fixed asset accounting system. Um, it's a very long title for a short policy. And this one does have a substantive change. There was a section that was added to the policy, um, section four capitalization. And this policy, this part of the policy was added after conversations and Director Henneken's working with our new auditing company um, as it relates to physical um, or intangible assets acquired with a unit cost of ten thousand dollars or more. Um, and so I would, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but it basically has to do with the assets, again, of ten thousand dollars or more, or an aggregate of excess of um, fifty thousand dollars, um, and how those are categorized. Um, so that is, um, whole section four was added to this policy. Um, again, something that the policy committee reviewed. Um, we gave Director Henneken's run for his money with um, somebody who does capitalization asset management and um, CPA on the um, subcommittee. So, and you know, our attorney over there. So we had a, had a great conversation on that. Um, so take time to to look at that. That one um, is also um, on our website for review and comment.
Chair Mueller?
Yes.
Um, I noticed that there are two section fours on here. So um, we might want to have that updated.
You are correct. We would need to update section fa, uh, four.
Four to five.
Yes.
Report to number four.
Report to section five. Thank you. Any questions on that? All right. That brings us to our action item, um, action items. And um, our first action item is our insurance renewal with Director Henneken's and our insurance extraordinaire, um, Steve McAlpin. Thank you for um, joining us for the last hour and fifteen minutes um, for the presentation today.
All right. We'll see if it actually will go into presentation mode this time.
Third time's the charm, right?
I tried each and every one before, and I probably shouldn't have. I jinxed it and said, oh, they're all working. Okay. It's partially because we're in the web view versus local copy. So next time, we won't do that. Let's just give it a shot. All right. Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbeck. Um, again, this evening, um, for action, uh, just a short presentation on property liability insurance ru, uh, renewal. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values of community, uh, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Um, good thing I remember them because this is covering up part of it. Um, focusing on excellence, integrity, and innovation. And this presentation aligning with our CHPS Board of Equity, Education Equity Statement. Um, governance, uh, again, this uh, was presented as an informational item at the last uh, board meeting, uh, the work session, and this evening, uh, seeking approval. So our insurance plans, again, our property and liability package, business auto, umbrella, um, boiler, machinery, and cyber liability. Um, our renewal process, uh, June, July, August, I start having uh, conversations with, with Steve. Um, and uh, what's, what we're going to do for this year for the renewal process? And and uh, start filling out lots of questionnaires. Um, and uh, and then August, early September, we start to receive renewal from existing providers and potential other bidders. Um, and then in September, we bring it as an information item because this is an October one renewal. And I really need to move this window this time. Okay. So um, where we landed this year, and um, I think uh, Steve has talked about this before, um, that we maybe don't traditionally go out every year and seek bids. Um, but you know, through the previous years in climate and the increases that we've seen and on the property liability and how fast they've been increasing, um, we've been shopping every year, trying to find the best rate that we can find. Um, and so this is a comparison of our um, ex, or existing policy that will be exiting and then uh, renewal premium. So as you can see, I won't go through each item, but at the bottom, the total premium moving from three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars for total premium to three hundred and fifty-one thousand, thirty-six dollars for total premium, just over eight percent increase. Um, I mentioned this before, that, you know, if you go back in time a little bit, pre-pandemic, um, this would be a very high renewal, um, or would feel like a very high renewal. Um, and the current and last few years, it is not. Um, it is a very good renewal, um, given everything that's been going on. Um, and uh, so we feel very good about it. We've had renewals in the teens, we've had renewals over twenty percent in recent history here, um, year over year. So um, we feel very good about this. Um, and with this renewal, we are making a change. Um, so in moving from Liberty Mutual to um, Chubb and Hanover um, as the main package. And then um, our cyber liability standing with Travelers. I'm going to go through these quick, um, and then if if uh, Mr. McAlpin has anything else to add, or if we have any questions um, available for answers. So um, you know, we've seen the market insurance rates increasing an average ten to twenty-five percent. Um, cyber liability insurance actually has planned off. Um, and we actually seen, saw a decrease this year in our cyber liability, which is fantastic. Um, wind hail, very tough. Um, and so that's an area where it was incredibly challenging. And um, we're very, you know, even though that our, our um, deductible has gone up quite a bit, um, it's not as, as much as it, what the market is showing. So um, we feel very good about that, not having just that flat one percent um, deductible, um, that we actually have it lower than that solidified. So for this site, um, um, separate from the other sites, um, so a half million and two hundred and fifty thousand. So um, you know, very fortunate there, um, again, saving on premium and saving on cost potential for any wind hail damage. You know, insurance, well, globally, is is uh, reinsurance rates continue to increase. Um, double-digit increases again this year. And so um, don't know that that trend's going to change in the near future. We'll see what happens. Um, so uh, obviously, we've had inflationary pressure recently. Um, the, you know, you look at the blanket property limit for all five schools, you know, that increased about twelve percent. Um, there has been decreased um, competition in this, in this market space. Um, so when you're shopping it, um, there's only a few players in the game to shop it to. Um, so you hope you catch them on a good day, I'll just say. Um, so again, we had Liberty Mutual, um, other um, companies looked at are AIG, EMC. Um, so obviously Chubb and and Hanover, um, as those are the companies that we're moving towards. So I think with that, um, I mean, if Steve has anything to add to it, otherwise uh, seeking approval from the board on our insurance renewal for our ten one.
Thanks, Brian, Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenwig, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you again. And uh, yeah, it's, it's just been a tremendous opportunity over the years and good partnership. And uh, it's much appreciated. And fortunately for you, I don't have anything else to add. We had an opportunity to, yeah, get into the weeds and discuss this in detail last Tuesday. So, but I'm obviously available to answer any additional questions.
Thank you very much. Julie?
I just have a quick question. Um, so I noticed we we were with Liberty Mutual previously. Do we ever break these things up and try to bid it out separately so that our property and liability package is separate from the business auto, et cetera? Just to see if we can get some sort of package or, you know, create our own?
Yeah, it's an excellent question, Julie. And uh, yeah, coincidentally, this year, uh, yeah, we were basically forced to do that. Again, property insurance is extremely challenging. That marketplace is incredibly tough for all industries, but especially, uh, you know, with, in the educational marketplace. So, yeah, so in the past, we, you know, we've been able to break up, yeah, some of the boiler and equipment, you know, the cyber liability, because there's specialty companies that have a certain niche with that, Travelers being one of them. So we, we, we broke up the cyber for the past five years. And Liberty Mutual did a phenomenal job year after year with a bundled package. However, fast forward to twenty twenty-four and, yeah, we, yeah, we approached several companies, all, all the players in the market that we could approach. And the, the best plan going forward was to do exactly what you're questioning. So we, we're splitting up the property insurance. And Chubb Insurance is one of the largest, if not the largest, writer of property insurance in the states. So they're, they're writing the property, the liability, professional liability, et cetera. That's landing with Hanover Insurance. And then thirdly, we've got Travelers are doing a phenomenal job, still dropping the rates almost twenty percent on the cyber liability. And then, and then they were able to, you know, wrap, you know, wrap up or wrap in the bundled at crime coverage. So excellent question, and we did exactly that. And obviously, it's market-driven.
Thank you. Other questions? Um, I have one question. Um, so for the renewal premium of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, thirty-six, um, Director Henneken's, does this fit within your budget production, projections?
Uh, yes, it does. So.
Thank you.
We're sitting good there.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to a vote. Um, can I please get uh, a motion to approve the insurance coverage package as presented?
The moved.
Mary, and a second.
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Good to see you all.
Thank you for your continued service. Um, next we have Director Henneken's, uh, gets to hang out with us a little bit more for the twenty twenty-four payable twenty twenty-five preliminary levy.
Okay, we're going to do this one more time, and it's going to work again. Okay. Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenwig. Um, this evening for action, um, I have the preliminary levy, uh, twenty twenty-four payable twenty twenty-five. Um, our mission, uh, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. I got to get this thing out of my way here. Um, and our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with the CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. Um, this was presented to the board on September seventeenth as an informational presentation and before you as an action uh, this evening. Um, so I wanted to start um, with something that we've uh, put forward before and, and our conversations with school funding. Um, and uh, the state really highly regulates how um, schools are funded. They're setting formulas, um, they're setting the tax policies. Um, and in this case, um, also they're setting the maximum authority for property levy. Uh, and then the only other way to increase that beyond what the authority that they've given us uh, and in the formulas that they've given us, is through voter approval. Um, so we have, again, the general fund, um, which we've talked about a lot. That's our main um, uh, funding stream for operating our schools. And um, it's made up of aid from the state and levy from the local taxpayers. Majority of that is aid from the state, um, and then the smaller portion of that is levy from the local taxpayers. Per the state formula, some um, categories, um, are aid and levy items. Um, this window is just in my way all over the place. Um, and uh, uh, you know, so as, in some cases, as the state aid increases, then that decreases the levy or vice versa. If the levy of the state aid decreases, then the levy will increase um, to maintain that's, that funding level. And so examples of that relationship between aid and levy, um, we've talked about before um, in the work session, but um, community education, um, general edu, general funding, and long-term facility maintenance are one of those categories where you see that, that back and forth. Um, so the, what is the levy, um, or, you know, it's a levy is a property tax, again, to the community. Um, and the district, uh, it's a direct tax to the community from the district. So we're receiving revenue um, in multiple funds. We have our general operations, general designated, general operating. And we'll see that in a chart in a little bit, um, to help that. And that's a fund one, so that's the main general fund. Um, and we have our community service, which is fund four, which is a much smaller fund. We have our building fund, which is fund six, which is our capital projects levy, which was voter approved. And then we have our debt service, um, again, uh, bonds that have been voter approved over time. So um, when I say what the uh, levy twenty twenty-four payable twenty twenty-five, what does that mean? Um, so this is the twenty twenty-four levy approving and certifying in twenty twenty-four. We're collecting and uh, payment in twenty twenty-five. We're receiving the funding in fiscal year twenty twenty-six or the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So they make that as confusing as possible. Um, and so in the preliminary levy process, we are approving, we're, we are always seeking to approve the maximum. Approving the maximum, it's, it's language that um, the state sets for us. Um, allows the district to capture any changes made by the state prior to the final levy certification in December. Changes happen for a variety of reasons. Um, one of the biggest typically is that leveling between state aid and uh, and levy calculations. Um, errors are always a potential um, within the formulas that they find as they're doing uploads into the system. And they're like, hey, wait a minute, this doesn't look right. Um, they go back and they look at it. Usually, it's the district that says, hey, wait a minute, my numbers don't look right. Um, and then they, they address it. Um, so approving the preliminary levy in September allows the county the time needed to estimate the property owner's property taxes. So um, that helps kind of with that timeline of why we're doing the preliminary levy now. Um, and then if, as we're approving the maximum, then going forward as anything shifts in that, um, then um, you know, if they're, they're increasing the aid, it's decreasing the levy or, which means it's as less levy tax to the community. Or if they're increasing the aid, we just want to make sure that we're capturing everything as it's flowing up and down. It doesn't, it does, um, so levy timeline is again, September twenty twenty-four. Um, we bring the levy to the board, the preliminary levy, um, seeking um, to be approved at the maximum. October through December, there's a levy adjustments, again, that naturally are happening. So like I said, and again, I mentioned the state need levy calculation adjustments and error adjustments. And then in December, we're certifying it. Um, and once it's certified, it's set for that next year. So before I, so I'm going to stop sharing for a second and reshare here. Oh, they closed out my.
That sounds really amazing in the background. There's some students cheering outside.
There it is. Okay. I was like, wait a minute, it got closed out. We're going to increase the size here. Okay. So what does that look like for our twenty-four payable twenty twenty-five levy? Um, and again, I talked about the categories, um, general funds or our general operations. So equity revenue that comes in, that's really student um, enrollment-driven. Um, so um, you see, there's not much change there. I'm going to kind of focus on mostly the larger changes that we have. So in this first category, um, really, the largest changes you're typically going to see is, you can see- can see number three is referendum. So, if we had a new voter-approved referendum. And here, we, in the previous year, we did have a new voter-approved referendum. And now, we see a $205,000 adjustment. So, with our voter-approved referendum, the operating levy, there's an inflationary adjustment. So, there's two things within that number. We see an inflationary adjustment now. So, it went from 827 to 847.10. And then, we also see that some adjustment due to enrollment. So, over the last two years, we've seen increased enrollment in this district, which is fantastic. And so, we see that positive adjustment. So, if enrollment goes down, then in all likelihood, we'll see some negative adjustments. One of the tough things in this area is, you know, a couple of months ago here now, I've predicted the enrollment for the, not this school year, but next school year. And those are the enrollment numbers that they're using in this levy. So, that can also affect, so you can imagine that I didn't anticipate a year and a half into the future that we were gonna have a large immigrant population moving into the district. So, there's where you see positive adjustments. So, then, moving down, so abatement adjustments, back taxes, so integration, so there's the designated area within the levy system. And integration is one of those also with aid and levy adjustments. So, we didn't lose integration dollars or increase in integration dollars as much as there was just an adjustment there. Reemployment is another one that, so there's two different types of unemployment. We have the old unemployment law, very traditional. We levy that expense to the community. So, we're guessing, again, what our expense is gonna be. And then, when the actual expenses happen, then there's an adjustment. So, that's where that adjustment comes into play. And we've saw big swings in our unemployment in that category over the last few years. Pandemic, obviously, one of the biggest reasons for that. And then, there's the other category of unemployment, which is newer, which is the summer unemployment for hourly workers. And so, that's not included here. I wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. And right now, that's funded through the state. And then, going forward, we'll see what happens. But that doesn't show up here. We are unable to levy for that unemployment. So, not a lot of other adjustments there. In the other categories, again, they're little adjustments, mostly due to enrollment, and they're positive. So, then, moving down to the capital designated, so we have operating capital, again, not a lot of change there. So, you know, buying equipment, operating capital, and it's both a levy and a state aid. And we have the facility bond adjustment. So, this is just accounting for, there was some improvements that were made to Columbia Academy a handful of years ago. So, we're seeing it here, and then, we're seeing the adjusting down below that matches that, down here in the capital facility bond payment. So, that's just adjusting down to make that payment for that. So, LTFM, again, long-term facility maintenance. We did not see a loss in long-term facility maintenance dollars, even though it looks like we saw a loss of long-term facility maintenance. Again, it was just an adjustment between state aid and levy. Our lease levy, so, you know, we can lease levy for improvements to our buildings. We've done that for the Highlander Center and Valley View. That's what that lease levy is. So, that's where that line item comes into play, and also with District 916. So, we're members of District 916. And in order for them to do facility improvements, this is a mechanism for them to do that, because they don't have a local community to go to. So, they go to the member district's local community. And it's proportionate to how many students that we have at District 916. So, then, we have a community ed. So, community ed is, over the years, has looked like we've lost funding in community ed, and to a degree, we have. But we've also picked up state aid in certain categories. So, one of the biggest changes there is the basic levy of community ed. It's part levy, part aid, as I said in the beginning, as one of our examples. So, we didn't lose any funding there. It's just that there's more aid and a little bit less levy in that category. And then, we have school age care, which is, again, an adjustment, but in a negative one, but it's, that's based off of actual expenses in school age care. So, again, school age care is something that I'm projecting what the expense is gonna be. And then, we get adjusted based on actual expenses. So, then, we have our capital projects levy. The capital projects levy is based off of the net tax capacity. So, as the net tax capacity of the community goes up, so it's almost like an inflationary adjustment. But as that net tax capacity goes up, our revenue goes up. So, we have seen that go up almost every year that we've had the capital projects levy. So, we continue to see a little bit of increase there, which, again, is very helpful for our buildings as they are not getting younger. So, we have that cost there. And then, our debt service, and, you know, our bonding that we have out there, our debt that we have. So, we see that fluctuate a little bit based on payments. And we haven't, our debt, actually, when we get comments on it often, is very low as a percent. And if you look at other communities, so, and because, you know, we've had some bonding that's happened since 1996, but 1996 was the last time we had something really major as far as bonding goes. So, I think it was 40-some million in 1996. And so, that's why our debt is lower, because that actually has dropped off, dropped off in 2023. So, and again, abatement adjustments, pretty minor back taxes stuff. So, all told, about a 3.8% increase. So, and again, across the board, that's attributed to the positive enrollment mostly, and then also that inflationary adjustment on our referendum. So, that's where that is coming from.
Thank you, Director Hennekenz. Before I ask for questions, I'll just comment too that this was presented to us in detail at our work session on Tuesday. So, lots of conversation and questions happened at that time. I don't think we need to re-ask those questions, but just communicating out that we did have a quite extensive conversation. But with that, I will open up for anybody who has questions.
Actually, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Thank you for putting in the fluctuations and what can cause that, because that's a pretty big reminder on why this fluctuates so much. And the limitation that you have with being able to put this together, what is, did you say it was an 80-page document to begin with?
No, it starts off 40.
Forty, okay. I'm sorry.
It's okay. But yes, it's a very long document, and, but it's important to have the whole thing, and so you can synthesize it down to the one pager, so that we try to make it as understandable as possible for what they provide.
And it is, it is a battle to get this to be understood. So, you are doing a fabulous job. So, thank you.
Michelle?
Yeah, I think the information you provided kind of covered a lot of the questions that we did have at the work session. So, thanks. Really quickly, and it may not matter, but there's two safe schools, and I just wanted to ask why they were separated?
Yes, sorry. I should label that. The second one is 916.
Okay, I kind of thought so.
So, yes.
Because the levy, the lease levy is the same. So, I, okay. Thank you.
Yep. I'll make sure I do that. Thank you.
Thanks. And the other question I had was, is why do we do a preliminary when in December it may change, like, most times, it'll change anyway and be adjusted? So, like, why do we have to have this first layer of it?
So, the county can estimate taxes for people. So, we have to have a preliminary and approve that preliminary, either at a number, at the maximum. So, then, the county can take that information and do the preliminary on the taxes for the county. So, if they don't have that, then they don't have any information until, concrete information until the end. So, it sets, it sets that timeline for them. So...
Any other questions? Jessica?
I just echo some of the comments of other board members about the work that you did in getting this presentation together. We did have that extensive discussion at the work session. This is a very, at least, I'll speak for myself, a very difficult topic to understand. The language that the statutes use does not make it any easier to understand for anyone, even us at the board table that are having these conversations more often. So, I really appreciate those preliminary slides and kind of walking everybody through what this means. I know you talked about sort of what it means when we're approving the maximum. And that's that language piece that I think is really difficult for people. So, I'm just wondering if you can talk about that a little bit more. When we say we're approving the maximum, does that mean that as a board, we're, we are approving the maximum possible increase in property taxes for our residents?
No. It just means that as, as changes happen, it just means that we're, we can capture those changes. So, the maximum could be less than what I just presented you right now. So, it could go down as they are working through the levy process. And so, you know, aid could go up in certain categories, and they could have missed it in the formula, or something could happen. And so, then, the levy goes down, and they could actually go down. So, maximum doesn't mean more all the time. It could mean less. So, instead of a 3.8%, it could be a 1.79. I mean, it's, the maximum is just their language that allows the, us to have those changes throughout. So, and, and that's really all it's doing. I mean, it's confusing, but it's just the language that the legislature, the state gives us.
Well, and I think we brought up in the meeting, like, do we have to say, you know, to prove as the maximum, could we say, you know, can we approve at, like, after, you know, final adjustments or whatever, and it is statutorily, like, required, that's the language we use in order to capture any of the adjustments that are made between now and December? So, good question. Jessica?
I was just gonna say, I just have a comment. I guess, being on the board for so long, is I have seen the levy decrease through, through these adjustments. And I've seen them increase, and I've very rarely seen them stay exactly where they were predicted. So, it will change, because that's what history tells me, that it'll change.
Jessica?
I just had two more questions along the same line of discussion. So, when we talk about the adjustment between aid and levy, is that, that adjustment something, like a decision, is that at our discretion? Is that a decision we're making, or is that an adjustment coming from the state?
It comes from the state. So, unless I directly ask the question of where that came from, so if it adjusted by, like, in the last run, there was one category that adjusted by $4.38. I didn't go ask them, why did it adjust by $4.38. There was just an adjustment of aid up and levy down. And, but, so that's directed by the state. I mean, I have no control over those, those adjustments.
Then, my last question was just around the word "capture," because that's something we've been talking about at the end of this levy cycle, right, in December, when it's finalized. We're hoping to capture those adjustments. So, what are we, when we say capture those adjustments, like, what, what is the outcome of approving a preliminary levy at something less than maximum?
So, if you approve the preliminary levy at less than maximum, we are choosing a number. And in each category, we're saying, this is what it is. And, and so, that's, that's, which basically just doesn't allow for any of the fluctuations that were to happen in any formula changes that happen throughout the next two months.
So, is it fair to say we're sort of, we'd be, if we choose a number, we're sort of rolling the dice to see?
Yeah. I honestly, I don't know anybody that does that. So, there's not one director in my conversation circle in the metro area that approves nothing but the maximum. It might be somebody else states somewhere that doesn't, but I don't know of anybody that doesn't.
I ask because, again, that word "maximum" has different meanings for different people. And I think just making it, having some clarity around what it really means to, if we didn't do that, right, if we went sort of outside of what the, the best, well, not even the best practice, the practice, right, of districts is what impact that could have on us come December.
Yeah. I mean, I think if we don't, if we don't, if we, if we set it, let me rephrase that. If we select a set number, so it's either proving as the maximum, or it's a set number dollar amount that we are going to approve, if there are adjustments that are made, and, you know, let's say, the aid goes down, our levy can't go up to accommodate that.
And then, we have a shortfall.
Correct.
And then, we're, then we have a shortfall.
Yep. Thank you.
Julie?
So, I think where the public gets confused, and where I think I get confused, is when we say the levy could go up, we already voted in a levy, and people pay a tax. So, how does, how does this relate to how much people pay in property taxes? Because we set a levy at $800 and some dollars per pupil, plus, plus inflation. So, how does that, when we say we're now approving the max, does that mean somebody's taxes would go up further than the 800-plus inflation that we, could you explain that a little bit? Because I think that's where it gets confusing, is how does it impact the homeowner?
You know, in that direct way, no. So, I mean, but you have to also remember that the, you know, every, every item that I kind of stepped through has a different formula to it. There's a different way of calculating. Some of them have involved in a tax capacity, most of them don't. And, you know, most of them are reliant on student enrollment. Some of them are reliant on the age of buildings. So, there's a lot of factors. There's equalization factors in a lot of these. So, you know, the wealth of the community versus the, our community versus the wealth of Moundsview community. So, that's kind of where the state aid versus levy comes into play. So, if, if we're less of a wealthy community, we have more state aid available to us in those categories. If we were more wealthy, then we would, it would be more levy to the community, because they're determining that your community can afford it. So, those are, there's, so there's, it's, that's why that's a 40-page document, because there's a lot of factors in those formulas. Now, when we say the maximum, we're not saying that we can increase that $847.10. We can't. That's, it's $847.10. And it's, and it's, and that formula specifically is, what's that number times our pupil units? So, that's, that's one of the simpler formulas. That, that just doesn't change. So, I think Jessica said it very well, and in the fact that, you know, we could have an aid adjustment, and, and that aid adjustment could decrease the levy, you know, let's argue, it decreased the levy in this category by $40,000. I would like the community not to pay that $40,000, but I just certified a number that said, I'm gonna levy the community that $40,000. So, I may have to do an adjustment in a prior year, but now, I just taxed them that $40,000 when it could have come in state aid, if I didn't take that state aid. So, we want to make sure that we can, I guess, capture those changes, so that, you know, the levy truly reflects what it's supposed to. It's reflecting, this is what we're supposed to receive in long-term facility maintenance dollars. This is the formula. They've made adjustments to aid and levy, but this is what it is. And that we're not missing anything but, for the district, but we're also not missing anything as far as what the community is, because the community could be missing something, too. We could be lowering the levy by getting more state aid, but we said no to it, because we didn't say the maximum. So...
And one comment with that, I think it's important to note, is that the operating levy that Julie, you're talking about, that, you know, was $839 per pupil unit, which has now been, you know, adjusted to inflation, is a part of this, but it's not all of this. There is additional dollars that taxpayers pay in support of the schools on, you know, their local tax statements. It's included in this. But that... But that, that operating levy that we just voted on and, you know, that the voters passed is a part of this. But there is in addition to that, that is also appearing on their tax bills.
Michelle?
Not to make it more confusing, if that's possible. So I guess the question that we might be asking too is like, how, so how, how does it work? So are we saying that as these dollars come in, it's gonna go towards this, this, and this? Like, so it's not like charging people extra for things that we need. It's just saying, as you are paying, this is what we're putting it to. And then if it's not covered here, then aid helps. And then like, we're just dispersing the dollars that we're already gonna, already gonna get or?
The dollars are coming in specifically for those categories. So like safe schools. I mean, those, those are very specific dollars. There's legislative language around those dollars and they can be spent for something very specific. It's only levy that provides those dollars to us. So security, you know, is one of those things. Paying for security guards is another one of those things. So that's, but that's very specific and I can only spend it, it's a restricted way. Now with the referendum, it's, there's, you know, it's a specific dollar amount, but that's operating costs or operating funds for the district. So that's not restricted. That goes sitting right in on a sign that gives us the flexibility to spend it for our operational costs within the district, which the biggest being teacher salaries. But that's, that's, so that's much more flexible. So it just depends, but they're all, you know, they're all very, mostly very specific on how like vocational is, is really CTE, career in tech. And so that career in tech is, you know, very specific. And that one, it's based on past year cost. So what were our costs? So how many teachers do we have teaching career in tech? How many hour, or how many class periods did they teach career in tech? That was our expenses in career in tech. That's what we're, you know, levying. So it just, each one is unique.
Right, so as they come in, like as we get them, we're not saying, hey, we need this now, so now we need more. Like everyone's still gonna be paying the same.
Yeah, and I don't control any of those.
Right, for sure.
We don't, we don't control those, those formulas. We don't set those rules to those. Those are all directed to us by the legislature, by the state.
Thanks.
Other questions?
All right, can I please get a motion to approve the preliminary 2024 payable 2025 levy as max, at the maximum?
So moved.
Jessica, in a second.
Okay.
Second by Michelle. Any other discussion?
I guess we maybe jumped ahead a little bit.
Yeah, I think we did. Yeah, I should have done the motion first, but it was good conversation. All right, hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hennigens. Next, you have board topics. Does anybody have any board topics? Mary?
I have two. First of all, it's Hispanic Heritage Month and we have a lot of wonderful things up on our, through our social media that involves our students. So please make sure you check that out. And also, you know, shout out to our, to our students' families and staff. The second thing I have is it is Read Band Books Week by the American Library Association. It's a really wonderful opportunity to go and see the different books that are, have been quote unquote banned in a variety of different areas, as well as reminding everybody the importance of reading and expanding your worldview. So that's what I have.
Great, thank you. Any other board topics? I just have one. Just remember that we do have a special call meeting next week at 7:00 PM, Tuesday, October 1st. Please let Stephanie know if you're not able to make it. We need to make sure that we have quorum. And thank you all for taking the extra time next week for that meeting.
It's gonna be at 7, not at 6?
Yes, it'll be at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Yep, the Subcommittee on Policy has a special Subcommittee on Policy meeting from 5 to 7 already scheduled. So it'll be at, off time, I know, we're just shaking things up.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
Yes, it will be, correct, at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, the first.
And we are, the policy Subcommittee is at 5, not 4:45?
Correct, yep. And then it's extended, it's the two-hour extended meeting. I know, we just really just confused everybody with time changes. And that was, you can, that's all on me. I picked those times, so you can, you can blame me. Any other others? That was for Mary.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. All right, hearing done, we'll adjourn at 7:55.